Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, October 20, 2016. Please rise as Thomas Pecel of Temple Fire and Rescue leads us in our invocation followed by our pledge of allegiance which will be led by Hiram Dixon, the SPJST Vice President.
Please join me in prayer. Gracious God, I ask for your presence to be felt this evening at today's city council meeting. Bless our leaders as they make decisions for the good of your people. Father, watch over our men and women, our military. Bring them home safely. Father, in a few weeks we'll make an election decision. Help us as a country to come together and after the election to move forward as one country. Father, we thank you for the many blessings you give us every day. We're thankful for the cool weather, but we're most thankful for the gift of your son, Jesus, and it's in his name I offer these prayers. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Now is the opportunity for public comments. Citizens who desire to address the council on any matter may do so by signing up prior to this meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. No discussion or final action will be taken by the city council. First item, or first person signed up, Stephanie Penny.
Hello. I'd like to say I'm...
If you'll just go right up there, no problem.
Hello, my name's Stephanie Penny. I live at 1815 Dewberry, Temple, Texas, near the Temple Airport where everything is coming. I'd like to address the fact that I really don't want no tattoo parlors in Temple. We have some in Morgan's Point, one in Morgan's Point, maybe one in Belton. I do not see that it's actually adding to our community. I'd be more worried about children having a place to plant vegetables, learn how to grow vegetables, or assisting our seniors with notion homes or villages for people with dementia. We have a lot of parks coming, and hopefully people will start using the parks instead of P Ridge, but I have no interest in tattoo parlors. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Rebecca Plots. Now, only one of you can speak.
Good evening. My name's Rebecca Plots, and I live at 8110 Iron Gate Drive. I just wanted to address the land rezoning that's going on in my backyard. I know that a couple of weeks ago many people came and they presented their arguments for not having it developed, and I just wanted to add my voice to it. I know that you guys have considered altering the apartment complex to a retired living facility. I'm not sure if there's a possibility of pushing it just a bit further back. I know that I was told 30 feet. I'm not sure if you could take it back to 45 feet. I know that the road is supposed to connect from Iron Gate all the way down to West Adams, and if that goes through, I was wondering if the city would consider putting in a sidewalk. There are about a dozen families right now that I walk with in the morning with my children down to Pearl Elementary, and I feel if that's a thorough road, then the traffic's going to pick up to avoid the school traffic and that our children are not going to be as safe as they are right now. We specifically chose a cul-de-sac that backed up to land that we were told by our sellers would not be developed. We were naive in that. I realize that now, but we're first-time home buyers, so we have to forgive that. But we really thought that our children were being put into a little corner of safety, and we just don't want to see that go away. So we would ask that if this continues the way it is, that you would consider some safety factors for our children.
Yes, ma'am, and I can only speak to fact during the public comments, but if I can just tell you a couple of things. This is for a rezoning, and it's a planned development rezoning, so any alteration that would come up later in any of the property sales would have to go back before city council, and so that then you would certainly have your opportunity to speak at that time. Nothing is set in stone here at this time, and also some of the other thoroughfare issues when that time comes can also be looked at.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda is a proclamation. If I could ask Mr. Dixon to come back up. It's Czech Heritage Month in the city of Temple. Gaxxmas?
Thank you for being here tonight, and if you don't mind me reading a proclamation to you. Whereas the month of October typically brings many festivals throughout the state of Texas to celebrate and honor the heritage of this state's Czech descendants. Whereas in the primary period of migration from Czech lands, over a quarter of a million people of Czech ancestry arrived in Texas to make this place their home. Since that time, the number and stature of Czech descendants living in Texas has grown tremendously, and there are well over 1 million people living in all areas of the state and walks of life who can claim Czech heritage. Whereas Texans of Czech ancestry take great pride in sharing with the rest of the state their contributions in the areas of art, music, literature, food, folklore, and many other fine customs that are part of Texas' rich, diverse culture. Whereas this pride is displayed annually in the month of October by Czech heritage societies throughout the state as they stage various festivals, some of which have been passed down from generation to generation. Now therefore, I, Daniel A. Dunn, Mayor of the city of Temple, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 2016 as Czech Heritage Month in the city of Temple, Texas, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the significant and lasting contributions made to the entire state of Texas by persons of Czech descent. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand and the seal of the city of Temple, Texas, this the 20th day of October 2016. Thank you, sir.
And would you like to say a few things, anything special that the SPJST has going on? It is on.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to the city of Temple for this proclamation, and on behalf of SPJST and its members and all the Czech people across this great state, thank you very much, and I appreciate it, sir.
Absolutely. Item four is the consent agenda. All items listed under this section are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member and considered separately. Council, this is item 4A through 4O. Are there any items that you wish to remove for separate consideration or discussion? All right, there being none, I'll entertain a motion on item 4A through O.
Make a motion on the consent agenda for items 4A through 4O.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item five, first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a conditional use permit to allow the sales of an alcoholic beverage with on-premise consumption where the gross revenue from such sales is less than 50% of the total gross revenue of the establishment on lots two through seven, 10, and 11, Block 1 of the Highline Edition subdivision located generally at the northwest corner of Scott Boulevard and South 31st Street. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, again, this is scheduled for a second reading on November 3. Just some background information, the entire district property, which encompassed the full 40 acres, was approved by ordinance earlier this year, and that was for a mixed-use plan development under the T-MED, T4 and T5C. This request would not trigger an amendment to that ordinance, but this request would actually generate a new ordinance, and that would be for the CUP specifically for the onsite sales and consumption of the alcoholic beverages. The approval of the use permit would be a blanket approval for the eight lots, lots two through seven, 10, and 11 of the Highline Edition. As you may recall, Lot 1 specifically was approved by city council earlier this year as well. In fact, it was early summer for Roses Cafe. This again is essentially the same type of use, but would be the blanket for the eight lots. And photograph of the aerial on the left is an aerial image of the entire property that is under consideration boarded by South 31st Street and Scott Boulevard, and a site plan boarded by the red would be the eight lots under consideration and the already approved Roses Cafe. This would be Lot 1. The conditional use permit process itself is subject to Chapter 4 of the Code of Ordinances specifically for alcoholic beverages and identifies distances from sensitive uses of 300 foot, specifically places of worship, public schools, or a public hospital. I do have the distances to each of those closest listed on here. The other provisions are, the other provision rather, is UDC Section 5.315. This reiterates the same distance requirements, but also identifies distance requirements for those uses that are triggered as bars, which would be 75% or more. That would not be applicable, but that would be the main difference. Otherwise, these two code sections are essentially the same. Terms of zoning, the request would be consistent, or would be consistent with the zoning map subject to the approval of the conditional use permit. And just some photographs specifically of the site with the current development activity on the property. To the north is residential uses along West Avenue T. To the east primarily is the Baylor Scott &amp; White Hospital, as I indicated, was listed as one of those sensitive uses, and it does meet that 300-foot distance. To the west, again, we're looking here at part of the multifamily phase within the district, and the subject property would be on the other side of this green area, as well as the Candlewood Suites Hotel and some scattered service uses that are to the To the south across Scott Boulevard are developing existing retail service uses as well as a existing hotel. Part of the rezoning process, staff sent out 25 notices to date. No notices have been returned in agreement or no notices returned in disagreement. Terms of compliance, UDC Section 5.315B relative to sensitive uses, Chapter 4 Code of Ordinances with alcoholic beverages, and compatibility with adjacent anticipated retail and service uses, the request is compliant with all three. Staff is recommending approval subject to three conditions. Condition number one, that the sale of alcoholic beverages be restricted to, within lots two through seven, 10, and 11 of the Highline Edition. Condition number two, subject to compliance to Chapter 4 of the Code of Ordinances, and condition number three, complies with UDC Section 5.315. After September 19 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended in favor of the request subject to the three conditions as presented by staff and voted 7 to 0. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Council, any questions? There being no questions, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. There being no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the first reading of item five.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye. And because I've gotten used to going out of order the past couple of meetings, and I had so much fun doing it, I'm actually going to ask that we take seven next because I think the other things on the agenda might be, have, take a little bit more time. But seven is a second reading. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from agricultural district to single-family attached three multifamily two neighborhood service in general retail districts on 42.066 acres, Lot 1, Block 1, First Baptist Temple West Campus located at 8115 West Adams Avenue.
Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, staff does not at this time have anything additional. Do you have the presentation available? And I'm also available should there be any questions.
And I think we just pulled this for voting purposes, and unless council has anything else, I will entertain a motion on the second reading of item seven.
Mayor, just one thing to clarify. Mark, do you have a slide that shows the staff recommendation of a PD? That slide would be fine. 20, maybe? Just wanted to make it clear, because on the agenda it doesn't read as planned development. And just a reminder that council approved staff recommendation of planned development on first reading, and so you may want to make that clear in your motion, that you're approving that on second reading as well.
Thank you for that.
Is the hearing is closed from last time?
It is closed from last time.
Can we ask questions of, I know there's a lot of the owners' representatives are here. Is that appropriate or cannot?
It probably isn't appropriate in this because we've closed the public hearing and we have to do it, but in subsequent cases, when this comes back again, we would have the opportunity to do so. On that, I'll entertain a motion on item seven.
Motion to approve item seven with the recognition that PD has been attached to the property.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Epstein.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
I'm going back. I promise I won't do that for the rest of the meeting, probably. Item six, first reading in a public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from commercial planned development commercial on Lot 2, Block 1, Tranum subdivision Phase 8 located at 5806 South General Bruce Drive to allow for a recreational vehicle rental business in the I-35 corridor of overlay district.
Yes, good evening. This is a rezoning to establish a planned development for RV rentals and sales at 5806 South General Bruce. A case history to sort of recap where we find ourselves. City staff became involved with the project when the RV rental business was established at the site. It was in violation of UDC zoning for the I-35 corridor. It's allowed by RITC. Staff worked for several months with the applicant to attempt a balanced approach to achieve site improvements and find a solution. The RV and fifth-wheel inventory is already onsite, and current inventory does exceed paved storage area. Received reports recently that indicate an additional business use involving helicopters may be occurring on the west side of the property. Here's the location of the site on South General Bruce. There were two former CUPs on the property and which are no longer in effect, and a current CUP on the property for one of the small build, a small building on the property that is not a part of this PD. It is Zone C within the I-35 corridor. Zoning for this piece of property is commercial, and it is surrounded by commercial. The previous CUPs did add screening on the site and added paved parking in front of that, of the building. The land use map shows auto-urban commercial as well, and this use, PD would be in compliance with that. Some more background, the use is described in Unified Development Code as a trailer, recreational vehicle, portable building, or HUD code manufactured home sales or rental. And the CUPs that were approved in the past, one was for a landscaping company, which I don't believe located at the site. Another was for a paint shop contractor storage facility, and that expired per ordinance of the third, which is for a window tent facility in one of the, in the shop building closest to the road. We've worked with the applicant to address the current prohibited use. Planning and zoning tabled this item at their September 19 meeting, instructing staff to renegotiate with the applicant, which we then did. At that time, the applicant agreed that the necessary signage that they had would comply with the overlay district regulations, and staff recommended decorative metal fencing, which the applicant agreed to. Staff also agreed that the applicant could attain permits for the fencing and any pavement onsite in the RV storage area at their own risk. We discussed decorative metal fencing with the applicant in lieu of the trees that had first been agreed to because they're, the most visible fencing on the site, it is in compliance with the overlay requirements. It would bring the site up in appearance. The price was comparable to adding trees and landscape beds, and then it would be more conducive for the operation of the business inside the fenced area to allow more room for RVs. Here's some site photographs. On the left is the site as it appeared before it was occupied with RVs from, it appears to be early spring. Currently, there is a chain-link fencing with the green shading in place, and that front fencing is the fencing that was agreed to to be substituted for the decorative metal fencing in front. The right photograph was recently taken showing the RVs onsite without any additional paving. There is an additional picture that I have a little later. This is an overall slide showing the improvement onsite from 2013 to the 2016 photo you just saw, and as you can see, the site has improved in its appearance since then. The photo on the left is the backside of the property from profit showing the RVs onsite. The right-hand photo was taken two days ago and does show the additional paving that was permitted at the site to park RVs on. It's approximately 30 by 80, I believe, according to the permit. Surrounding properties, Caliber Collision is north of the property, and east is, across the interstate is ACT. To the south is the Unlimited Furniture Company. We did send out notices. Nine notices were sent. One was received in agreement by the furniture company. He agreed in principle, but wanted to reiterate his support of the staff recommendation that RVs only be parked behind the fence inside the fenced area and not in the grassy area behind or in front. The Unified Development Code, Section 3.4, defines a PD as a flexible overlay zoning district designed to respond to unique development proposals, special design considerations, and land use transitions by allowing the evaluation of land use relationships to the surrounding areas through development plan approval. And per UDC Code 3.4.3 and 3.4.4, a PD does require approval of a development site plan that is binding. This is the site plan that has been under discussion for a fair amount of time and has been changed to substitute the fence in front shown in yellow, which is a decorative metal fence similar to the picture shown earlier, for the trees. The project limit is the light-colored line that slashes diagonally, so it's inside that fenced area where the RVs would be stored on a paved area. It could be as small as what was initially permitted already, 30 by 80, with the limit of RVs displayed inside the area to be only on the paved area. The applicant stated in his meeting with us that he intended to pave a much larger proportion of this area inside the fence to use for his product storage. The parking spaces are delineated in light blue. There are enough parking spaces for the small office building, and the window tent business that has a CUP has its own parking space as well. The site improvements that we discussed were a decorative metal fence with a gate across the front of the RV storage area, RVs only to be placed on the paved surface. And at the applicant's insistence, we did discuss ahead-of-time signage because that's important for this site, and he was in agreement with what is allowed in the code already for freestanding signage, so we did add that. Staff recommendation is to, is for approval of this request with the following conditions. The proposed paved area will match the inventory of the RVs. The decorative metal fence, six feet in height with a matching gate, shall be installed across the front, and no RV storage is allowed outside of the screened and paved area. Also, the use shall be limited to RV rentals or sales and tied to the current tenant, not the other uses that are allowed in the code, which would include portable building, sales and rental, or sales and HUD manufactured homes. So we wanted, that was clear for the RV rentals or sales only on this site. At their September 19 meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission voted to table the proposed PD and sent it back for consideration with staff and between the staff and applicant. At their October 3 meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission voted to approve unanimously 6 to 0 the rezoning per staff's recommendation. Any questions?
Ms. Barrett, if I could ask, if we were to leave it the way that it is, how would that affect the, how would that affect the existing RV business?
Leave...
Not change it, just leave it as the commercial?
The RV business that is currently onsite is not legal use of the property.
Thank you. Council, any questions? All right, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. There being no one wishing to speak...
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Well, the RVs that are onsite, are they all going to be later models, up-to-date RVs? Or are we going to be doing a lot of repair of...
Yeah, if you don't mind going up and just stating your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Rourke. I live at 9506 Adele Drive in Killeen, Texas. I'm the owner of Rising Sun RV Rental Company. To answer your question directly, they're all brand-new motorhomes purchased this year from the manufacturer. The intent is to buy them new every year from the manufacturer. As we have our dealer license, we'd have a P-number to sell both motorhome and travel trailers from our own current existing inventory. So the model is kind of based off of a major RV dealer in the west of the United States, Road Bear. They buy brand-new coaches from the manufacturer. They rent them for one to two seasons or one to two years, and then they sell off their inventory in order to do it again. So that's the concept here. We may have one or two consignments throughout our time as we go forward in the rental business, but our majority... but our majority goal is to rent the motorhomes and the travel trailers to the public, give them great product that's brand-new. And we've been doing this for about six years total experience time, and the older coaches just don't do as well, so we decided to buy them brand-new, so our customers would be much happier with a working product. Does that answer the question, sir? Or...
There's no, there's no repair, there's not going to be a repair shop?
We're not going to have a repair shop as of yet. We do our own on-site repairs for the current existing inventory. We do have a few RVs at various dealerships such as Lone Star in Harker Heights, who are kind of partnered with Lone Star, and we have some partnerships with Cresview down the road in Georgetown. We don't have the techs on board that are trained. We have them trained enough to do the general maintenance, oil changes, repair, generators, there's some side awnings, things of that nature that are kind of limited use. But outside of that, we don't have a repair shop planned at the moment. Maybe by 2018, the first quarter, we can look at a repair facility at that location. But as of right now, the plan is rentals and then general maintenance, and then sell that inventory off.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. In that case, there being no one else wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. If I could say something before we call for a motion, this particular property has come up every year for the past several years, and every year that we have it, we are, we have a zoning change to try to enforce the zoning, or to try to enforce the use that has been the non-compliant use of that particular time. And so, it's, I feel like we're always chasing whatever the non-compliant use of the property is, which is not, which I think that sometimes we have to do in certain circumstances, but when you have to do it three or four years in a row, you look at it and say, at some point, you either have to comply with what has been changed for you, or you just try to, or just try to play by the rules like everybody else does. I would be disinclined to support this, not because I have anything against the sale of RVs or what you're trying to do, sir, and I appreciate you coming here, visiting this evening, but just because I don't know what is going, because we've gone through this so many times, I don't know what's going to happen this time next year, and with this same property, because history has proven to repeat itself on this particular property. And I welcome any other comments from any council members.
I agree with that. I'd also say, I don't have anything opposed to RVs, but I know a lot of staff and counsel and volunteer time went into the L-35 overlay, and at the time, we didn't want them there, is my understanding, which may need to be something to be looked at if we think we want them there, but...
Which is something that we are currently, you know, the staff is relooking at the overlay, and I don't think, again, like I said, I don't think it's a question of the, of the RVs or not the RVs. I think it's a question of that we have continued to, we have continued to bend the rules for this particular property, and at some point, I just don't know if that is what is the appropriate action for us to take.
I agree, and there's been no good faith effort to comply any time.
Unless it's coming up, you know, unless there's a new application.
Is there a long-term lease that they have for using this property for that use at this time? Or do we know what the timeframe is?
Two years. If there's a two-year lease, but if it's a non-compliant, that's not a, I don't think that's our question, though.
I share your concerns about coming back to us, which we have discussed this several times, and as pointed out, taking a lot of staff time and everybody else's, and I hope this is one that, if it is approved, that will stay for a long, long time and don't have to do it again.
The complaints of the property have always been that it wasn't up to standard, wasn't up to code, didn't meet the overlay districts, et cetera, but every time that we've asked him to do something, he's done it. Every time I see, each year when I see a new aerial view, there's another little patch that's paved. And that's, you know, that's sort of what we've been, whether he did it before, whether he did it after, the point to me is that he is complying.
Compliant, compliant after the new zoning request has gone through to change it, and so therefore, the compliance has to be brought up before the, before it goes up again. That's my only concern with it.
May I make a living?
I will entertain a motion on Item 6.
Motion to approve Item 6.
With staff recommendations, sir.
Yes, I'm sorry, with staff's recommendations.
I'll second it. All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Mayor Protim Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Philkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Yep. I'll read both item, I'll read both Item 8 and 9 together. Second reading, consider adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 16 of the Code of Ordinances to delete Article 8 Tattoo Shops. And Item 9, second reading, consider adopting an ordinance amending the Temple Unified Development Code, Article 5 Use Standards, deleting Tattoo Parlor as a prohibited use, allowing body-piercing studios and tattoo studios by right in light industrial, heavy industrial, general retail, and commercial zoning districts, providing certain limitations. And Article 6, special purpose and overlay zoning districts prohibiting body-piercing studios and tattoo studios in the Interstate 35 Corridor Overlay. And Article 11, definitions, providing definitions for body-piercing, body-piercing studio, tattoo, and tattoo studios. Mr. Chandler.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. If I may, I'll just go straight to your action from two weeks ago.
Brian, I'm so sorry that we did not talk about this beforehand.
Sure.
I think I'm going to go ahead and do the quick presentation on health and safety, and that way, I won't mess...
Okay, you bet.
Mess you up later.
Did you pull it up?
Is it in the folder?
I'm in big trouble with Donald right now.
But he's wearing a bow tie tonight, so at least he's cool.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I was, Councilmember Morales asked me after the last meeting if I could go into a little more detail about the state health and safety regulations regarding tattoo studios and body-piercing studios, and we've mentioned that the state has comprehensive regulations many times, but I don't think we've ever actually talked in detail about them. So, this is relatively short, but wanted to touch on some of those regulations briefly. So, oh, my graphics are going to be messed up. Sorry. I was trying to do something special like Bren does with her PowerPoints, and I have, I think I have failed at it, so Bren is going to give me a class next week on this. So, currently, you all know, Chapter 16, Article 8 of our current code prohibits tattooing unless it is under, unless it's done by a licensed physician. It was adopted, my understanding, back in 1996, before the state enacted comprehensive health and safety regulations for tattoo and body-piercing studios. And the state has done that in a couple of different places, in the Health and Safety Code, and then more specific regulations in the Texas Administrative Code. That's what I'm going to talk about briefly tonight, so ignore those lines. That's just crazy. Importantly, the state defines body piercing as the creation of an opening in an individual's body other than in their earlobe, so the regulations I'm going to talk about don't cover just regular ear piercing to insert jewelry or another decoration. And then tattoo is the practice of producing an indelible mark on, or figure on the human body by scarring or inserting a pigment under the skin using needles, scalpels, or other related equipment, and the term includes the application of permanent cosmetics. And as you know, the definitions that we're proposing to add to the UDC are exactly as I've read here, so we took them straight out of the state regulations. State, our tattoo and body-piercing studios must be licensed by the state, so the actual establishment has to be licensed. The license can be up for, up to two years. And the state also allows a business to get a temporary location license, which is just that, it's for a temporary location where tattooing or body piercing will be performed for a period not more than seven days, in conjunction with a single event where the primary function of that event is tattooing or body piercing. We haven't talked about that much, but I just wanted to make you aware that that is allowed under state law. In addition to the actual establishment being licensed, the tattooists and body piercers, the tattoo artists and body piercers must be registered with the state individually, and they have to take a course of instruction that's been approved by the state. To receive a tattoo studio or body-piercing studio license from the state, you have to submit a signed verified application, the application fee, and submit evidence from the appropriate city zoning official in which the studio is proposed to be located, confirming that it is allowed in, within the existing zoning regulations. The state has the authority to refuse to issue a license and to also revoke or suspend a license for various reasons. I've listed some of them there. The applicant or license holder is convicted of a violation of these state regulations. They fail to answer properly or falsely answer a question on the application. They're indebted to the state for a fee or penalty under the regulations. They make a misrepresentation to a customer or the public, or they're found to be intoxicated on the licensed premises. Person who owns, operates, or maintains one of the studios and the tattoo artist and body piercer have to take precautions to prevent the spread of infection, including using germicidal soap to clean hands and the skin area of the client, wearing clean apparel and rubber gloves, using sterile tools and equipments, and keeping the tattoo and body-piercing studio in a sanitary condition. And this is a very general statement of those requirements, but I will say that the state requirements are much more specific than what I'm saying here, so they talk about the type of equipment that has to be used for sterilization, you know, use, putting on rubber gloves when you're handling the equipment, getting it ready for use. If it's torn, you have to obviously throw those away and get new ones, so it's, it's pretty specific, even down to the amount of lighting that you have to have in the studio. Importantly, tattooists may not tattoo a person younger than 18. There are very limited situations when a parent can consent to someone under the age of 18 getting a tattoo, and it's basically to cover up another tattoo that maybe they've received, and that, that tattoo has to have gang symbols, drug-related words on it, so very limited situations when someone under the age of 18 could get a tattoo. And the same is also, a little bit different on body piercing. A parent can consent to someone under the age of 18 having some type of body piercing. A person, you cannot tattoo a person who they suspect is under the influence of alcohol or drugs, and it's the same prohibition for body piercing. Records, reports, and inspections, they actually have to maintain a written record of all their clients that they provide services to, and they have to keep them on file for a specific period of time. You have to show your state-issued ID when you request service. The studios have to report any infection to the state, and the state can inspect the establishments at any time. The physical facilities, the studio must be in a permanent, non-dwelling building or portion of a building, which must be in a location which is permissible under local zoning codes, as we've talked about. If it's in a portion of a building, that's a, that's a non-dwelling portion, it has to be separated from any living quarters by a complete floor-to-ceiling partition. Obviously, it has to be maintained in sanitary condition. Use of tobacco products is prohibited in the studio, as well as the consumption of alcohol, which I think was a question that was asked at the last public hearing. Other health and safety regulations that I talked about, they're, they are very specific regulations on sterilization, personal hygiene, and the proper disposal of infectious waste. And if you have any specific questions on that, I have the statutes here that we can go through. So, that's pretty much it. Other thing I wanted to mention, which we'll probably talk about more after Brian gives his short presentation, is there was a question at the last meeting about hours of operation for these types of businesses, and currently, the city and state, not that I'm aware of, we don't have any regulation on hours of operation. In very quick research this week, it seems that other businesses like this in other cities are, you know, open as late as midnight on the weekends, and maybe as late as 10 during the weekdays. But currently, there are no city or state regulations that I'm aware of that would restrict hours of operation. So, any questions about health and safety? Sure.
It was good without graphics, too.
Okay, I'm sorry. Really, Bren's going to teach me.
All right, and I could keep this very short if you like. I was just going to start with reminder of the council action two weeks ago, which included the locational standards for tattooing, body piercing, and tattooing, of course, does include permanent makeup, to allow them in C, which is commercial, LI, light industrial, HI, heavy industrial by right, with the following distance requirements: 1,000 feet between each of them, each of these shops, 1,000 feet distance from schools, 1,000-foot distance from churches, prohibiting them in the I-35 corridor overlay, as well as in the strategic investment zone grant corridors. And then the general retail zoning district to allow them, if part of a licensed beauty salon, which that's defined by the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation, and providing at least one additional salon service regulated by TDLR, and subject also to the same distance requirements previously mentioned. And so, that's essentially the map that we showed the last time, and then some additional consideration, which we, Kayla discussed in the workshop, since then, looking at a potential alternative to the, for general retail, instead of tying them to a salon, essentially providing the same, a 200-foot distance requirement from existing residential zoning districts in general retail. And so, if that were applied, then essentially, what you see here on the screen highlighted in green would be kind of the eligible pieces of property. And so, I could go through the rest of the presentation if you wish, but essentially, I just wanted to kind of do a quick recap and bring us up to, up to date, and allow Kayla to fill any blanks as well, whatever you all prefer.
Right. And just to clarify, the map that you see now is the kind of gold color, it would be eligible properties in CLI and HI, and then the bright green is eligible properties currently in GR, if you apply the 200-foot distance requirement from residentially zoned districts.
Further questions for Mr. Chandler at this time? Okay. Ms. Linderoos.
No, I think, you know, we, staff did make the proposal at the last meeting to tie these businesses in GR to another business, essentially a salon use. Looking at that over the past couple of weeks, I don't know that that actually, you know, accomplishes what, you know, Brian and I thought might be helpful. General retail is obviously one of our common retail districts, but it's a little less intensive than commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. It is more commonly located closer to residential, residentially zoned districts. So, going back to my comment a few minutes ago about the currently... general retail from residentially zoned districts, just to provide a buffer in case you do have one located in a GR district that's even open till midnight. If you think about commercial LI and HI and some of the uses that are already prohibited in those districts, I think they are compatible to tattoo studio and body piercing studio, thinking primarily about hours of operation, which might be later in the evening than some of our other commercial uses. So, I think that there is justification for, for putting that restriction in GR and then keeping the other spacing requirements that we've talked about previously for all four zoning districts. If that is the option you want to go with and go away from what was proposed at the last meeting, I did provide some draft motion language, and you would basically be approving staff's recommendation, making the change that you made last time, adding the, the spacing requirement from churches at 1,000 feet, but then putting in place the spacing requirement for general retail of 200 feet, and I've listed out the specific residential zoning districts that that would apply to.
Thank you both, as I said in workshop, for your complete study of everything there is to tattoos. Counsel, any further comments or questions? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion on the second reading of Item 8 and 9. I'll need to take those separately, though. You do have motion language in front of you, should you need to use that.
And the motion language would be for Item 9.
Make a motion on Item 8.
I'll make a motion for approval to consider adopting ordinance amending Chapter 16 of the Code of Ordinances to delete Article 8 Tattoo Shops.
Second. Motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Mayor Pro Tim Clough.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pillington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye. And I'll entertain a motion on Item 9.
Make a motion to approve Item 9 as recommended by staff with the following additional limitations: Tattoo and body piercing studios may not be located within 1,000 feet of a church. In the general retail zoning district, a body piercing studio or tattoo studio may not be located within 200 feet of the following zoning districts: urban estates, single-family dwelling 1, single-family dwelling 2, single-family dwelling 3, single-family attached 1, single-family attached 2, single-family attached 3, two-family dwelling and townhouse.
Motion. Second. Have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Mayor Pro Tim Clough.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pillington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.